Ready? Welcome to the Executive Committee meeting of the Republican Council. If you would please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right. The public notification of this meeting has been published and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, Alice makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
York, thank you. Without exception, we'll approve the minutes. I mean, I'm sorry, we'll approve the agenda. Any exceptions? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We move on to the approval of minutes from our December 20, our December 6, 2021 meeting. I need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion with one change that I've already talked to the county clerk about.
Okay, Alice makes the motion and York seconds.
Please.
Without exception, we'll approve the minutes of the December 6 meeting of Executive Committee. Are there any exceptions? Hearing none, these minutes are approved. Next session is citizens' comments. Anyone who wishes to speak during the citizens' comment portion of the meeting will limit their comments to no longer than three minutes and will address counsel in a respectful manner appropriate to the decorum of the meeting, refraining from the use of profane, abusive, obscene language. Are there any, any members, any of the public who would like to address us? All right, no public comments at this time. Next thing we'll need is we've got an update from Assistant County Administrator Patrick Hill on information technology, which is something we've been looking forward to for some time. Patrick, you have the, the mic and the floor.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Patrick Hill and first off, I want to thank you all very much for allowing me to provide an update to you on the Communications and IT Division.
Hold that mic a little closer to you there, thank you.
All right. Be, before I get started, I'd like to introduce Elizabeth Wood. Elizabeth Wood has joined the Communications Department as the Social Media Specialist.
Hi.
She is a-
Are you going to bring her up to let us see her or is she going to-
She is a recent graduate from Appalachian State University. She received a bachelor's in science with a dual major, one is as Public Relations-
Public Relations and the other's Advertising.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, so excited to be here, thank you, little.
It's really great to have good people like Elizabeth and Chris and really all the communications team out there providing good information to citizens on the various work that county council does within the community. And so, one of the, one of the vehicles that they use to, to reach citizens is with gas station TV and that has been extended for another six months. Gas station TV continues to be a very cost-effective way to reach people. Within the past month, we, we've reached out to 265,000 times, those 30-second ads have been played. So, and we've played PSA's such as the Detention Center, hurricane preparedness, and holiday messages as well. And we've actually seen a little uptick in some of Phil's applications since we've been running those ads, which is, which is a good thing. And to further talk about communications, Coastline sat down with Senator Tom Davis recently and to talk about some of the things that are going on in 2022, his outlook on that and the, the latest release of Coastal Kingdom has, has recently come out. So, both those two things are on YouTube and on the county channel if you want to check those out. Some of the things that recently made headlines across, across the world really was a cyber vulnerability called Log 4j. Now, if you heard it, it came out a couple of weeks ago. We received a lot of communications from SLED and from the FBI to, to patch. Some of, some of the council members sent me some articles about it and South Coast Cyber sent us an article about it as well. And just wanted to let everyone know that we have remediated that vulnerability within our environment. Email though continues to be a number one attack vector for, for local governments. On average, every month, we receive 375,000 emails and of those 375,000, 40%, so roughly 150,000 of those emails are, are either spam, malicious, phishing, links trying to get us to do things, impersonation attempts. But our new spam filter that we put in place back in November seems to be taking care of a lot of those and I'm sure you guys have seen the, the email digests that come through that, that have a list of everything that was quarantined. So, so as you can see, email is, is a big one. And since we are local governments, we're always constantly under attack, we receive probably about 127 severe alerts a day from, from people trying to, to access our environment from other parts of the, other parts of the world, trying to group force accounts and do all these different things. And we spend rough, for the IT Systems team, we spend roughly 13% of our budget on cybersecurity items such as intrusion detection systems and host-based detection systems. But as we go through these alerts, what, what we realized was is that we've been going through these alerts for, for really for years. And so, what we realized is that, that these systems generate a, a really a great learning opportunity for any kind of budding cyber analyst. So, what we did is we did an MOA with USCB for some, for two cyber interns and we hope that we'll be able to further the, the mission of South Coast Cyber to, to help make Beaufort County a, a cyber hub. In addition to, into that, we have three new portals that will be going live in January and February. One is our Citizen Transparency Portal. We also have a new FOIA portal that's going live and we also have our new employee Intranet page that's going to be going live as well. And we also have two microsites that are, one's for emergency and social services and another one is for engineering. And these two sites are designed to kind of streamline the way that people access the information for those services. So, they don't have to go through the navigation of going to the individual department, they'll actually have a, a site that they can go directly to. And the communications team will craft the appropriate dialogue for, the appropriate audiences for when these systems actually go live. But I wanted to give you all a heads up in advance that those things are coming. Finally, I just wanted to, to talk briefly about broadband. We're continuing to work with our providers to improve our broadband everywhere initiative, right? And we've come up some, with some really good ideas. We're coordinating with Hargray about different ways that we can improve the, the fiber connectivity to St. Helena Island. And yeah, I think we've seen a lot of, a lot of activity in St. Helena Island that they're, that they've built out as well as Seabrook. And we're doing some really cool things with data. Dan Morgan with GIS has reached out to Mr. Tanis with the Office of Regulatory Staff to get their broadband data so we can, he can mesh that with our maps so we can really get precise on where we want to, to really lay the conduit down to reach these different neighborhoods. So, we've got some exciting stuff and thank you all for giving me that time to talk. Does anybody have any questions or anything? I definitely have the superheroes here if, if you need any-
Alice, you have your-
-collaboration or anything.
Really glad to hear about the MOA with USCB students, that's, that'd be great. But the FOIA portal, how will that work? If someone wants to request a FOIA, will it go-
Yeah, so, so right now, our FOIA system was built upon old SharePoint and so, we have migrated everything over to the, the latest Microsoft version of SharePoint. And what we've done is we've created a FOIA portal that citizens can go to, that's, that's almost kind of separate from the SharePoint, but it'll be relatively the same thing. They'll just follow the link and, and fill out the information, but it will, it'll allow for, really to cut down on, I'm hoping anyway, it'll cut down on the time that it takes us to go retrieve the information.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
This is Austin Bossen. Patrick, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you for the work that you're doing in the IT Division. You spoke a little bit about the ongoing efforts working with Hargray on the broadband issue and you spoke of the expansion of the broadband into St. Helena areas and the Seabrook areas. I'm, I'm overly concerned that, I don't know if you're generalizing when you say Seabrook, but I want you to focus sincerely on the bigger state and the Sheldon community areas because that's where we needed more than, than some of all the areas.
Yeah, I was kind of generalizing with, with the, the Seabrook, but it's really in, in your, your areas and Councilman Glover's areas that, that they're really focusing on. And I can provide you with the, the list of, of addresses where they're going to now and if there's, just for example, like we talked about Horace Dawson Lane. So, if there's any areas in particular that you, that you know of, we can, we can certainly make sure that that's on their roadmap and, and get those taken care of.
That'd be great.
Just quick, anybody else?
Yeah, well, still on broadband, are you coordinating or making any contact with the school districts to make sure that particularly those, those areas where students are having difficulties, that we're making sure that we reach those areas as well?
Jared's on the line, so I think he's had some dialogue with the school districts or maybe Heather has.
Yeah, this is Jared. We've had some dialogue with the school districts. We also been working with the state. So, between the school district's information and the state, we have the addresses of students. However, due to HIPAA, we're not allowed to actually know the names of those, we just have addresses and locations. So, we're trying to pare down and see if we can refine some data as far as which students' addresses have access and which ones don't or poor access. But we're continuing to refine the data between the school district and the county and the state.
Appreciate that, thank you.
We've got, we've got some really good ideas and I'm really looking forward to getting the broadband data and drilling down into that with our maps to see what we can come up with.
I, I just really asked the question as you show you off and Jared off, I know you're on top of it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Patrick? All right, thank you Patrick very much, excellent presentation. It moves us to number eight on our agenda, which is the acceptance of a grant award from the Department of Justice with the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $70,005. Is there anybody who can tell us about that?
I don't see anyone on the line.
Thank you, Pinky.
Good afternoon. I don't believe anyone from the sheriff's office is on the line, but we actually have two grants from the Department of Justice and I figured we would do number eight and nine at the same time. We have one for the sheriff's office, as you mentioned, and the funds will be used to purchase equipment and increase the DNA labs extraction capacity. And then our second grant, which is agenda item number nine, is also from the Department of Justice, but it is for the coroner's office and it is in the amount of $113,227 and no matching funds are required for either grant. And the purpose of the coroner's grant is to develop and implement accreditation standards to, for the coroner's office.
Thank you, Pinky. Any questions on that? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion to combine eight and nine, to approve eight and nine.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, without exception, I'll approve items seven and eight on our, I'm sorry, eight and nine on our agenda to accept grant awards. Any exceptions? Hearing none, eight and nine are approved. Item 10 is approval of an alcohol and drug abuse department to apply, sorry, approval of, for the alcohol and drug abuse department to apply for R-CORP implementation grant. Drug abuse is going to get so much money, they're going to sink if they keep applying this. Somebody want, somebody want to tell us about this one?
Yeah, it's nice to come before you and ask if we can take money from somebody outside of the county citizens. What we're trying to do is we're trying to submit another HERSA grant, this one's for $1 million and it's a rural community opioid response program grant, which we would like to partner with the Detention Center and Beaufort Memorial Hospital in order to spread out our tentacles into the community to try to be where a lot of our patients interface and to try to help them bridge the gap and get to treatment when appropriate. So, we're, we're hoping that we get your permission to apply for it and then if we get it, I'll come back and let you know.
Congratulations. If you get all the grants you've applied for, then you can be a revenue source for the rest of the county.
Well, you sometimes have to get the personnel in so that you can start doing the work and that's where we struggle right now, but we're hoping things will change and we're hoping to be able to benefit the county with this one and hopefully we get it.
We appreciate what you're doing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve item number 10 on the, right, any questions? Have a motion for item number 10 on the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Mr. McCowen, and do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Gerald. Without exception, we will approve the request for a application for a grant for alcohol and drug abuse department. Are there any exceptions?
I have no exceptions, but I would like to say that I think this is an important request that Steve has made and I would encourage us to consider it as favorable and move it to full council for consideration.
Thank you, sir. All right, without exception, item number 10 on the agenda is approved. Item number 11 is ongoing additions to the, the Rules and Procedures Handbook for Beaufort County. We have added, Sarah and I have added some additional chapters there and it's your convenience, take a peek at it and if any questions or concerns, several have been brought up and we've already made a couple of changes based on input from council members and we look forward to any other additional inputs you may have. We're getting, we're getting close to the end, believe it or not. All right, item 12 is an appointment, I think this came from, Mr. McCowen, this came from your committee, is that correct?
The one before that was from the Community Services and we moved it over to Executive so as to prevent convening a meeting for just one item.
Right. And, and the motion is to appoint Mr. Dean Nadler to the Seabrook Point Special Tax District with an expiration date of 2026. So, I have a motion to approve Mr. Nadler.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. You know, that's in your, that's in your district, is it not?
It, it is in my district and I, I wanted to, I wanted to pose a few questions before I move forward with this.
Okay.
But we can go ahead and, I'll go ahead and second it and then we can have, have the discussion.
Okay, well, we're in discussion. You have the floor.
All right. As I read the information that was submitted, are we certain that the candidate, Mr. Nadler, lives in the Seabrook Point subdivision? There's a lot of, there's a lot of information that's redacted and I can't tell if he actually resides in the, in the subdivision or not.
He does, yes, sir. We had that confirmed with voter registration.
Did you hear that, Gerald?
I got it.
Okay.
I got it. I'm good.
All right. Without except, we have a motion and a second and we've had discussion. Without, without exception, I will approve the appointment of Mr. Dean Nadler to the Seabrook Point Special Tax District. Are there any exceptions? Hearing none, item number 12 is approved. Are there any other matters to be brought, welcome back, sir.
Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
I had last week off, it was quite relaxing for me.
You deserved it.
Appreciate the staff handling matters for me. Two things I want to mention to you all is, one, tomorrow at nine o'clock down at the Boston Library, we'll be doing the reopening of that facility. As you all recall, the library director, Ms. Dickman, came before you all some months ago with some changes that she was doing with the layout there to secure the building and make it more efficient and all that. That occurs tomorrow in morning at nine o'clock. The second thing I want to talk to you about, just mention briefly, is something that I've been dealing with, or we've been dealing with, Phil Foot has been dealing with for the past couple of months and it relates to what's happening with Steve Donaldson and the grants that he's receiving and things like that with drug abuse. Many folks don't realize that people that have substance abuse problems, have substance abuse problems to deal and to cope with their mental illness. We have dealt firsthand with that here on this property over the last several weeks and I would encourage you all as council members that whenever you see the state legislators and the members of our delegation, that you- and the members of our delegation, that you impart to them how important it is that they deal with the mental health crisis that is upon the state. We need to see some action, some severe action, some significant action at the state level on this particular issue so that our local resources don't have to be spent trying to deal with situations in an ineffective manner. Phil Foot, to his credit, has taken on personal responsibility to deal with the situation here. And I'm proud of him, but it so far has been to No avail. And I think it's time for you all as council to help us with the state delegation, if at all possible, to help us deal with this issue. Phil deals with it a lot. We have about nine or 10 cases in our detention center right now. So we can't do anything without some additional state level resources. So anyway, I'll quit rambling about that. I just want to let you all know that's important to me and I'm asking for you all to help out any way you can. Thank you.
Eric, what kind of numbers are you asking for in that regard as resources from the state?
We just need the state to take on the responsibility of providing mental health care in a way that's meaningful and appropriate and effective. Right now, they're not-
In the detention center? Detention center?
Well, it would be, it would be part of the detention center, but also just people that may not, that need the mental health services from a general practice matter, they may not be at the detention center. They may be people that have to, that Mr. Donaldson has to deal with through substance abuse and all of that. But there is no real mental health care program here in the state of South Carolina from what I can see and what I have witnessed over the last few months, regardless of where those folks might be residing. It could be in our detention center, it could just be members of the community that are wandering the streets or living on, you know, public properties. So.
What's your thoughts on where that, those resources would be delivered with regard to a department within the executive staff that would deal with that?
Well, right now, our best person to deal with it is Phil Foot. I'm not sure that he's well equipped to deal with it. I'm looking at working with the ACA teams to bring in our own mental health professional here on staff. You all may hear more about that as we go into the budget cycle so that Phil can be freed up to do other things to better use his time. But right now, public safety is the best location for that to do. And I would encourage you all to reach out and talk to Phil directly about the experience that he's had over the last several months and probably years dealing with this particular issue. It's a major, it's a major, major problem for us here at the county level.
Is that community-wide, not just in the detention center, that would be housed with Phil's public safety?
It's all of Beaufort County and it's all of, it's all of the states of South Carolina at mental health.
I understand that, but with regard to what we would like to try and do, it would be housed with Phil at this point, you think?
Yes. Phil would be the best, Phil would be the most effective resource at this point to give you information as to the significance of the problem. He and probably Steve Donaldson.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we all that have been to this building are very aware of the problem right out, of the issue, it's not a problem, it's an issue right outside the door. And all the efforts that Phil Foot has made with the state agencies today, it's still an issue and the revolving door that he and Steve Donaldson and the detention center are very aware of.
I think Logan has a question as well.
I'm sorry, Logan?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Larry, quick question. If I set up a meeting with some of our state officials, would you be willing to attend that with me? I think a little bit more your expertise.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely.
Actually, I'm going to reach out to them today.
Some of them have been contacted, Logan, in particular, Representative Erickson. And she is very aware of the issue and the big picture. So if you want to set up a meeting with others, that would be great, but I know Representative Erickson has been very involved to date with our particular problem.
So we can include her, right, Alice, in the meeting?
We should, yes, definitely.
Okay, great. Yep, sooner the better.
Thank you all very much.
I'll reach out to them today, Larry.
Great, thanks, Logan.
Thank you.
I'm going to take this opportunity, well, thank you, thank the administrator for that presentation and I'm going to thank, take this opportunity to say thank you to Phil Foot. Phil's been struggling with this problem for years and it's just gotten worse and worse. And it finally showed up on our doorstep, our council's doorstep, and it became a little more obvious to us, but it's been obvious to Phil Foot for a long time. And it's very frustrating and if any of you ever have an opportunity to discuss this with him one-on-one, to get a better handle on the problems he's tried to deal with unsuccessfully because he can't get cooperation or funding to do it. And it's a huge problem. So thank you, Phil. Thank you for all you're going to continue to do and we'll do whatever we can to help you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Gerald, chairman? I think we headed in the right direction in trying to get this, get the attention of the state officials at the state level. However, rather than us trying to meet with a selective few of the state representatives, why don't we take the initiative to invite our state delegation representatives and less address this to the full, to the full delegation and have them, see if they can get some movement and action in the direction of this crisis that we deal with.
That's a good idea. The delegation, as you know, meets periodically and we'll have an opportunity to meet with them. I don't know when that date is, but next date, we'll make that number one on the agenda. Mr. Chairman? Anybody else? Yeah, Stu?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Gerald's on the right track, that a meeting with the delegation makes some sense. And as I think about this, are we in a position to either further define what the problem is or to suggest what some of the solutions are? Because it may be, if we get a position to do that, we may get more reaction than if we just say, here's a problem, you all need to go solve it at the state level. So just a thought, if we have some ideas of how to approach this problem.
We have a lot of ideas, we have a lot of potential solutions to the problem. We just need to have the opportunity to convey that, convey that message to folks who can assist us in solving the problem. And in our, in our mind or in my mind, that would be members of the state delegation. And I'm not saying the state delegation isn't doing what they need to do. I don't want that to come across that way. I do think it's a significant problem that we need to work on here at the local level and possibly join with other counties to solve this at a state level as well. They're just, the state care for mental health is just not what it needs to be for this period of time in the state of South Carolina, in my opinion.
Eric, can we also reach out to community organizations that have an interest in this type of issue that we could invite to a larger meeting and hear what they have to say and perhaps they could also suggest some ideas on where we might search for some additional funding, perhaps at the federal level, to provide assistance to the county in the department that you decide needs, that you decide will be handling this matter? Because I think there's probably people out there who are, have been concerned with this for quite some time, but I don't know if they have reached an audience yet or that there's been sufficient interest to organize them in a concerted effort to try and do something about this countywide.
We will, if you don't mind, as chairman of the Community Services Division, I will get the appropriate folks to reach out to you and we'll get a meeting like that scheduled in addition to these other initiatives you all are going to do. The more we talk about it and the more people we talk about it with, the quicker this problem's going to get solved.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Your cat is hand up.
I did, but I'm looking for, I'm like everyone else, looking for a solution and the best way or the better way or a way to get it out to legislators. I'm just wondering, is doing a resolution from council about this matter here, would that be something that we all can rally behind to give to our delegation, to let them know? Because I just met with one of the members of the delegation. If I'd known that, I would have brought that up. So, you know, having something in writing that I can always give to them and say, this is what needs to be done, seems that this county is behind doing something, putting something on paper and present to them and stuff. And that's what I thought Stu was getting, alluding to and stuff, so.
Yeah, I think we need to define the problem for you all and lay out some steps that need to be taken. I agree with that.
Yeah.
And we'll do that.
Okay.
We have a lot of talented people here and they have access to a lot of-
I'm really glad that you raised this issue because it's been a concern of this council. I guess we just don't know what to do and, you know, there are players out there and we need to just sort of coordinate and bring all the resources to bear because the problem's not going away. No, as long as we have children, the problem's not going away.
And send these folks to Savannah or Charleston where there's a shelter.
It's not the right.
Not this way.
I agree. I'm with you.
It's just not good.
Yeah. Covering up is not the way.
That's right.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right, I think that concludes all matters having been brought before this committee. And this meeting adjourned. And Alice, you want to take a break or you want to go straight into your-
I think we need to take a five-minute break to set up.